Good evening, welcome to the Board's Selectment Regular Meeting for Monday, September 30th, 2024. Declare the meeting open at 6:00 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I would like a motion to approve the warrants for WR 2507, the payables.
I move that we approve the warrant for WR 2507 and PR 2506. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I would like a motion to approve PR 2506 since I didn't ask for it before, you just threw it in.
Oh, I didn't know you were doing it separate.
Yes, this one had to be done separately.
Alright. Make a motion to approve for the warrant PR 2506, that one's payroll. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. I would like a motion to approve the minutes for April 16th, April 29th, May 13th, May 28th, June 3rd, June 10th, Special Meeting of July 15th and a regular meeting for July 22nd. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes. If there's no questions on the minutes?
I have no questions.
I do. Add one thing in.
Sure, which one, Don?
July 22nd. Since Don said Rutland is willing to take the police chief.
Yep.
That was a suggestion of the Rutland chief.
Oh, okay.
I'm just passing the message.
Sure, okay, so I'll say, okay, Rutland chief.
That was on the 22nd.
Yep, the 22nd.
22nd.
Okay, thank you, I will make that before posting it.
So, I'll make the motion to approve the minutes for April 16th, 29th, May 13th, and 28th, June 3rd, June 10th, July 15th, and July 22nd with the gestated direction.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public session, is anyone present for public session? Paul?
Paul O'Shea from Gaffney Road. I just want to bring up a liability concern that bothers me. I happened to visit the library about a week and a half ago and parking in the parking lot over there, there was absolutely no protection for a car parking here and accidentally going over the bank. I mean, there's nothing, okay? I mean, we see every day in the news, somebody driving into a house, somebody driving into a storefront. Couple of years back, we had a patron of the senior senate go over the bank and hear John Kimball. And if somebody goes over that bank and it's probably a good 50-foot drop, if the car happens to turn sideways on its way down, it's going to be a rollover. If there happens to be somebody at the bottom of the hill, if there's like an event going on a right field and somebody goes over there, I mean, somebody could get hit. I think there really needs to be a guardrail on the edge of that parking lot. I did a quick measurement, I mean, it would probably take like 61 feet of guardrail to properly protect that parking lot.
Have you brought this up first at a trustees meeting? Library trustees meeting?
It's a municipal parking lot, okay, it's not only utilized by a library, it's used when you have an event on a common, it's used when you have an event on race.
Asking question.
No, I'm bringing it up to you people because it's, to me, I think it's a major liability for the town.
If I could just, it's a library parking lot, we've always unfortunately had to pay for the paving of it and we are about to repave it again because somebody complained about the grade of the new handicap spot. And over the years, we've had other complaints about this lack of a guardrail and we've always been told that it would get immediately wiped out by the snowplows and that the highway department didn't want it.
So, I love the library, I think you people do a wonderful job, I'm just concerned about protecting the town. And.
No, my only point was.
No, I understand, it's still town property, it's still town liability and I hate to see anything happen to anybody, okay? Let alone having to throw money away on lawsuits or whatever.
I appreciate all that, Paul, I just wish you had gone through the trustees meeting.
Okay, I'm just leaving my concern with the board, okay, how it gets handled?
Right, but you put us in a position where it's usurping their authority over the library and I don't appreciate that. I don't think.
I'm sorry, it was not meant to be offend, okay?
I realize that, I was, I was making a point of order.
And I think where there was opera money available until December, it might be a good utilization of opera funds to protect the town from any type of lawsuit.
Okay, thank you. I think we can take the opportunity to speak with the library trustees and come up with some kind of a solution to this problem. If that's agreeable with you.
Yeah, we got a lot going on over there, so we'd be happy to, to address this as well.
Okay, very good, thank you. Waiver of right of first refusal for 199 Grace Lane. Mr. Flag?
Thank you, Alan Flag, 199 Grace Lane. First, thank you for putting me on the agenda at short notice, I do appreciate that. We have a need for a waiver of the right of first refusal from the town on the property we're selling. We bought it 12 years ago, as you know. I've been on the Finance Committee for the last six years, just recently resigned last month, so I don't think the town's in a position where it's going to exercise the waiver. The assessors have gone through all of it. The issue is that when the title search was done, the Registry of Deeds found an old method ties back to the parentage, is what everyone assumes, it was never released. So, before, we've actually postponed our closing, so I could be here tonight to ask for a waiver. You got a copy of it if you'd like to see it.
Please.
It does need to be notarized to execute it.
Oh, I had a copy.
You never had it in 61, right?
We did not.
Yeah.
It's because it was never released, what I'm told from the past. There's no money, actually, we went to put into 61, Mike.
I guess what I'm getting at is it should have, it must have been released with the assessors at some point, otherwise.
Nobody has a record of it, the Registry of Deeds still shows it was never released.
Yeah.
So, if it was released, it was never submitted to them.
Because you would have had a lower tax bill, I guess is why I was getting that.
Yeah, no, we never, we never went into 61.
It was never, was never stuck in 61, I guess it was released at some point.
It was.
Must have been.
Because you never had a lower bill.
That's what you have to check, we never, we were at the full tax rate the entire time we've been.
Right, right.
So, I can't explain it, no one has an explanation as to why it's the way it is, but the attorney we're using basically said it's a blemish on the title and you're going to have a very, very hard time ever selling that property unless the town, because it's never been released as far as the Registry of Deeds is concerned.
Even though it probably has.
And even though, I wouldn't say it was, but.
It was, yeah.
So, I'm just asking to do that, they, they're basically, my attorney called it checking the box. The title company said they're crossing the Ts and dotting the Is, so.
What would the board like to do about this?
We have no interest in it.
We do not.
So, I'll make a motion to accept Alan Flag's request for was it 199?
199 Grace Lane.
Grace Lane and for the first right of refusal for the 61.
Master General Law, 61A, Section 14.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Should they just sign it?
Yeah, I think you only need.
They said they only need one person, I asked that question.
It just needs one.
Sometimes I've seen them, they're three and sometimes they're one over the years. I said they just needed a signature for the chair.
You know, next to your name or something.
Notary. Okay, thank you.
Keep one of these.
I'm going to make a copy, I'll have Alan make me a copy.
You got it, I just need the original to go to the registry. Think I remember how to run the machine.
Well, we hope you'll come back and visit the town every once in a while.
Actually, I was in town today, going to the Finance Committee meeting on Wednesday. Corrie has asked me to attend to just go over some things and.
Thanks, Dan, we appreciate you coming to help out.
Yeah, moving was not the easiest thing, as you know, we've talked about. A good town.
It's official.
I will do that for you, Martha.
Thank you. One-day liquor license for Fogs Memorial Library.
Yes, I'm here for a liquor license, but I thought I'd update you on what's going on over there. Recently, we had to replace the sewer line out to the septic tank. It was found to be crushed by a woman to my left one day when it, the septic backed up on her over a year ago now, but we had no water and that was part of why, where there was no water flowing, push everything in, but when investigating it, we discovered that the pipe was crushed. Had to dig up the patio and replace the whole line and I just mentioned this because Mike Russ and Ryan McCaffrey did all of this for us in a weekend for 500 bucks.
Labor Day weekend. Labor Day weekend.
Yes, Labor Day weekend. Just can't thank them enough.
Thank you.
So, what we thought was going to be a real disaster and expensive turned out to be awesome, easy, it's fixed. Skyline, who's doing the roof repairs and just to back up, they're doing the roof repairs because the company that installed the roof, Barnard Roofing, went out of business and sold their business to Raymond James, who wouldn't answer our phones, our phone calls. Finally, we got this guy, Skyline Engineering, who's from up in Fitchburg and while he was up there, he diagnosed that he thought that the leaks that we've been finding in some of the plaster's feeling in the historical room, for example, are related to the chimney cl- old chimney caps had cracks in them. So, we had him build us new custom copper chimney caps and hopefully he did some repairs and hopefully our leaks are fixed and the caps will last long beyond us. This Saturday morning, we are finally opening up the playhouse, which is named for Tessa Packard Wisnewski, oh no.
Wisnewski.
Yeah, I do have it right. Wisnewski is the last name, at any rate, at noon, her kids are gonna cut up a bowl and a ribbon and it will be open to the public. It's been, just the outdoor section has been open and we, it's been a huge hit. I've just mentioned previously that the next thing is, is to fix the parking lot and what Paul mentioned, it has been discussed many times over the years. I don't, I guess we didn't think it was as much of a hazard as you do, but I think there are a lot of people who would at least like some kind of a, this is where you stop. Maybe the town could install a guardrail, that would be awesome, I don't know, we'll see. But we have held off on the parking lot because we decided that the ash, there are two ash trees along the line of the property that we share with Chris Shue and we felt like since the property is so torn up over there right now, this is the right time to maybe take those dying trees down, especially since we have people playing outside all the time there now. So, we've had a couple of people come and look at the line of trees and hopefully we'll get some estimates from them. So, anyway, that's, that's what's happening over there. The liquor license that we're requesting is because we need to raise money and we're reviving a swinging desserts fundraiser that we used to do every spring.
Right.
Greg up the street, what's Greg's last name?
Matiros.
Matiros, thank you. And is bringing his swing band and we will have the usual friends, food extravaganza and we sell a little beer and wine. Usually have a non-alcoholic bunch. In the past, it's made us a few thousand dollars.
What date was that going to be?
November 9th, it's a Saturday.
The application?
You've always.
We'll vote it and I'll reprint it later. I just wanted to make sure it was the type. It is a type. It is, okay. Okay.
Alright, so I'll.
I'll get it to Lauren.
I'll make a motion.
I'll entertain a motion. It's 7 to 9, look at the application, look at the application.
Yeah, okay. I make a motion for one-day liquor license for Fogs Memorial Library on November 9th from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll reprint this and you guys can then sign it.
Okay.
I am noting that no restrictions have been placed on it. And someone has to join, let me know who it is.
Yes. Susan, Susan, I'll leave this in Lauren's mailbox.
I'll show it to her.
Thank you. I'll be there signing it when I, okay, it's my type. That'll be fine, very good. Building Commissioner's Office Hours. We have been requested to have a change of his office hours. Dear sirs and madam, due to personal circumstances, I need to change my office hours. When I started working for the town of Oakham, I was asked to work two hours on Friday. At a later date, I was asked to change to work one hour on two different days, which I did. Now, I need to change back to one day a week and feel that if I go back to working two hours on Friday morning when other offices are open, I will be able to serve the needs of the town and my family. Thank you for your understanding and assistance, I look forward to continued service to the town. I will still do inspections Monday through Friday as needed. Regards, Robert Lanciani, Building Commissioner. What would the board like to do with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll see an issue.
I have no objections to it.
No. Make a motion to allow building inspectors to go back to Friday hours and he didn't give a.
Nine to 11.
Nine to 11? Fridays? That'll be every Friday.
Effective this Friday.
Yeah, okay.
He'll come one day, he said, if it gets approved either Tuesday or Thursday, still, and then Friday.
So, that'd be the 5th. Effective the 5th.
Fourth.
Yeah, okay, effective October 4th, 2024.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mark it please approved, thank you. The next, we have a reallocation for opera funds for the Motorola server for the Police Department.
That was in regards to an allocation that the board had made about a year ago for a thousand seventy-six dollars, I think at the last opera update. That was still pending, thought it maybe had gotten paid out of the fiscal '24 budget. Well, the accountant just, as she was closing the books, realized that it's still, the grant is negative or needed nine hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty cents, so it's less than the original allocation, so because it was voted to put back, we need a new vote to use the nine seventy-three out of fifty at ARPA.
So, you got the number? And this is for what they've already purchased?
Yes.
Yeah.
This was the difference of the grant, which is less, a little less than the original allocation.
So, we had a thousand left over, we took it back.
But we've actually needed it.
Said we should have taken the nine hundred out of that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we've only taken seven dollars.
Yeah, okay.
So, I'll make a motion to expend for, from ARPA, the Motorola service, server and that's the police station for nine hundred seventy-three dollars and fifty cents to close that grant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Coming soon, sponsored by the Parks and Rec Department, we have Oktoberfest coming.
Yep, it'll be Saturday, this upcoming Saturday, the 5th, 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Just a quick update, we have Agronomy serving beer and wine from 2:00 to 8:00. We have the, the Fire Association is doing their traditional chicken barbecue. They're also doing a fire at the ball field, which they will stay till the end and see it to completion. It's a little bit, I think, scaled back from the one that we had two years ago, but hoping that the weather's great and it's a good event.
Dump tank? Nope, not this year, nobody volunteered.
Barely get anyone to volunteer last year, Tim was the Tim and then just random, you know, people that were willing to, other than that, nobody wanted to get dumped, so, no dump tank.
That's a shame. Okay, very good, thank you. Tickets for the chicken barbecue from the fire department?
They'll be installed at the fire station or, Harold, anywhere else?
Members have them. Members are at the station tonight, they're doing association meetings tonight, they're getting ready.
Have they gotten sold a lot, do you know?
Wasn't a lot, I think it was like fifteen or twenty the other day.
Harold, do you have any with you?
No.
Okay.
If I can.
Just checking. Okay, very good, thank you.
I think one of the few that sold.
Okay, we have a question to consider for the status of the new police vehicle and discussion of the vehicle being replaced.
You got the paperwork?
Yes, police chief had given me paperwork for the certificate of origin along with the paperwork to register the upcoming new vehicle with new plates, so.
With new plates?
Correct.
Why do we need new plates? To transfer from the old car to the new car. We're not keeping the old car.
Yeah, they've got four cars.
Got to make four cars for.
Plus two Humvees, right?
And two Humvees. I believe the last time he was here, he said it was like 250,000 miles on that car.
Yes.
It has the engine and tranny from another
Right.
wrecked vehicle.
If anything should happen to it.
Why are we keeping junk?
He says it's not junk that it runs perfectly.
It's junk, it's a 2016.
It is an old car and it has a lot of mileage on it.
And are we adding more money into his budget for maintenance? Because he's going to need it on a car that old.
Probably, excuse me, probably. The only reason that, or one of the two reasons that he thought perhaps we could keep it is that when police officers are on detailed duty in town, they really should not be using their own vehicles. They should be using a police vehicle. And the other would be that it had been noted that our ACO person uses her own vehicle and this way she would not have to use her own vehicle and there wouldn't be any repercussions.
If you let the ACO use it, you're going to increase her budget to handle the maintenance on that vehicle plus the additional insurance and the gas. We just turned down a regional proposal that would have handled all of that, we have no issues. Now, we're going to go up to nine thousand, ten thousand dollars for the ACO when we can have everything and a kennel for 7100? That doesn't make sense. And as far as the details go, there's three Cruisers, they're brand new.
Yes, I know we have one that's not.
Yeah, so I mean, they can.
All the time.
They can use one of those.
Yes, that's what I, that's what I was considering.
He has one and there's a spare sitting there, so.
Yeah.
I don't see a need to go to four cars.
No, not if we have that spare, we should not.
What's?
We do not need to spend money.
Do we know the delivery date?
I don't know the date.
Ready, you said?
Yeah, I think it's close to.
Almost.
Yeah.
It's almost ready to come. Paul?
Yeah, if I may, just as a point, if you remember when a cruiser was destroyed during a storm, that cruiser only had 22,000 miles on it at the time, that entire drive line was put into this car, this, the drive line in this car doesn't have 250,000 miles on it, it's probably somewhere around 100,000.
I'm aware of that, I'm aware of that.
I'm just saying, it's a good serviceable vehicle if you have a need for it, it's, it's not a piece of junk.
The other side too is, that's four vehicles times, you know, full collision and liability.
The car still has 250,000 miles on it, no matter what, new engine, new transmission, doesn't matter. The rest of the car still has that mileage on it. I went through this, I've talked to Ford representatives.
I used to work on state police crews, okay? That car was put up on my lift and was inspected by the entire board, I don't think you were there, Lucy, when they did the inspection. Okay, but that, that car is in good shape.
Then auction it off, we'll get some money back because we need the money.
That's fine, I'm just making the point that it's not a piece of junk, that's all I'm saying, it is a serviceable unit.
In my opinion, it is. That's it.
I have an opinion too, and mine is just as valid as yours, okay?
I accept your opinion. I didn't say anything about that.
All I'm doing is making a point that the car is not a piece of junk, it's a serviceable unit if the town has a need for it. Or even if they put it on mark ball, like the last time when we lost a cruiser, I mean, we were borrowing a cruiser, I mean.
True.
Paul, they have three new Cruisers, I'm not too worried about this.
Is it too late to, do we know where we're at with the, the delivery and the registration and?
We didn't send the reg.
Oh, I didn't send the registration because after, I just want to make sure. I get the confirmation from the board for everything prior to turning anything in.
Okay. Well, let's, if you want to make a motion to.
Get a question back in.
Put that on the sale block. The old one. And then transfer the plates. It still leaves us with three cars.
Somebody has a question.
Listen. Kevin?
Kevin Curriell, Turnpike Road, what's the policy for? Detail using. Cruises in town? Doesn't it, well, we have a policy written on that?
You have a policy for details working in the town?
Isn't it in his policies? We've had for two years now. I think it is.
I'm not sure I follow the question.
But they do bring their own vehicles.
They have been.
When you're in town, your own car is not a police, not a cruiser, because we're not making any, the officer.
We're just talking town details, which would be. Which would be. Highway department, pre-warden. Now, if they're working for the utility. And the detail officers from Timbuktu. I don't think we really have a dog in the hunt as to whether they. They're not gonna become.
Right.
Using our car for.
No, right.
You know, Verizon.
Well, this, this, I, I, I was, I was sure that we had a policy that. The detail policy was written up and that should be in there.
There is a detail policy.
I know if we.
I know what you're talking about, you know, if, if.
If the highway has them and they decide to use a car. You know, a police vehicle. There, there's no charge to the town. Just the detail officer is in a cruiser for. You know, whether it's on a corner or whatever, they feel it's a little safer.
I, I agree, you know, I agree, but who's gonna want to that then? If there's a utility and. You know.
Well, if it's a utility company, they charge them for the vehicle. I forget what the rate was, but it's not cheap. I mean, I'd rather they not do that, cause I don't want the idle time on the cars, but.
Yeah, that's, I just, just a question.
I forget what the rate was, it was.
It was.
For the vehicle, see, it's up there.
It's up there, yeah.
Yeah. I think it was more than what the officer was getting.
Yeah, it was enough to cover wear and tear and. Yes.
Yeah, it was, it was up there.
Yeah.
There is no detail policy that was ever written.
There's a detailed policy, yeah, it's a pretty extensive one.
I think it has more to do with the wages.
It does.
Yeah.
It does.
The vehicle. Make the motion the way you wanted to read, I'll second the motion. Cause I mean, you're looking at. I don't know how, you know, insurance and. And everything else for a fourth vehicle.
Did we, did we find out the cost from that, from the insurance company? They didn't get back to you? We, we did ask the insurance company for their cost.
We don't have to decide on that tonight, but if. If you want to transfer the plates. And I don't know what the delivery date is. But we should decide that.
I'd make the motion that we transfer the plate from the old car to the new car. And hold off on the old car.
And we'll make the decision as what to do with it.
Yeah.
Put it up for sale, whatever.
Exactly.
At a later date.
Do that at a later date, yeah, that's fine.
Does that constitute your motion?
You can say so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, obviously I have to wait until the vehicle's here.
Yeah. Believe the transfer fee is less anyways, isn't it? Than the new registration? New plate.
Oh, municipality, there's no.
Do you have the next item? Highway superintendent. Oh, I didn't prove.
Oh, really, it's a date?
The dates on the.
The board of selectmen received an email. Good morning, and this was on August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. I am writing this letter to inform you that I would like to step down from the superintendent's position. I have thought long and hard after doing it for just under two months, it is not a good fit for me. I would like to go back to my previous position as operator mechanic. With your guidance, I will keep running the department until a candidate is picked. I want to thank everyone for supporting me, everyone has been more than helpful. Thank you, Harold Black. Thank you. I know he's here. Any discussion? What would you like to do with the resignation?
Wait, hold on, I'm sorry, I, I wanna make sure that that's the right.
That was the first.
That was the first one, okay, I'm sorry, this is.
I thought it was the first, I thought it was the first one.
Nineteen seventeen.
Basically.
It's basically the same email, slightly different. Content in the middle, good afternoon, I'm writing to inform you that I want to resign from the superintendent's position and request to be returned to my previous position. Of operator mechanic, if I am not able to go back to my previous position, I will look for a new job. I have been struggling to leave work at work. And it has been affecting my home life, I have had many sleepless nights. I want to thank everyone for supporting me and being more than helpful when I needed a hand figuring things out, thank you, Harold Black. Thank you. What would the board like to do with that resignation?
Uh, make a motion to accept Harold's. Resignation as superintendent. And also make a motion to allow Harold to go back to his previous position at his previous pay rate.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You need to, oh, the post.
Yeah.
Done. So that would be effective.
When's it effective, Harold, you didn't put a date down?
You want me to do it till December first, that way it gives two months to get, that way you guys can find.
If you can, sure.
That would be good.
You guys are okay with that, else.
Alright, so I'm gonna make a motion to update that voted motion to. Harold's uh. Superintendent back to his previous position to be effective. December first. I don't know what day that is on the calendar, but. May want to move it to the end of the pay week, so it starts fresh. Does the calendar work for that?
Yeah, just have to give me a second.
Okay.
It's a lot of uh.
Yeah.
December first is Sunday.
So, yeah, I would do it until.
December first.
December first.
That would work if it's a Sunday.
Yep.
Okay. All set.
Oh, yeah.
I'm gonna second that. Second, you made a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So Harold, you're good till. That day and thank you very much for doing that.
You did a great job, Harold.
Any new business to be brought up by the board? Michael?
No.
We had a response from Charter. Which was. From the other day. Which was basically a re- reiteration of.
Stone, Stone Road?
Yeah, they won on. Fault. For lack of a better word. So Maribel sent their response to. Town council this morning, or last Friday, last Thursday. So we haven't heard back from Jared yet. So that's ongoing. But we're gonna try and push town council, because if we have to reallocate that money before the thirty-first. We don't want to lose the opportunity to reallocate that. Yeah, so. Let's see if we can get in touch with. Jared this week. Pin it down, have him pin it down with Spectrum.
I think that was the best we can do for now anyway, until we get. An absolute decision of what our next step can be.
Yeah, I think the next step would be probably is, Jared's recommendation is to. Have council send them a registered letter. Stating that you are in violation of and. Cause the letter they sent, they didn't quote anything for, from the contract and.
I just brought it to you, Doc.
I brought the contract tonight, and so the reasons they stated in that letter to Lucy. Um, don't really fit with the contract.
So they attached that letter plus the contract?
They did attach the.
Contract?
No, the spectrum.
And the email, it was, the attachment's words, the letter and then the original contract that was signed.
But they didn't underline it.
No.
The paragraph they were citing.
No, no, they didn't, no, there was no.
I think their wiggle room was um. Item nineteen. And more importantly, I think it's um. On scope of work. For. Outlined. Section eight, notice of violation or default. Item eight, um. Subsection A and B.
That'll be interesting to see how that works out.
I think we could get a decision before.
And that's at the letter to. Lucy as the chair. Cause that's the whole point, they don't wanna come before the full board in a public meeting. So they only wanna communicate with. The chair at this point, it sounds like.
They don't want to be on the record.
Mm-hmm.
For the court date.
Yeah.
I'm sure not.
Sure.
I'm sure not. Now, we'll see what council has to say.
Yeah.
Any other new business to take up? At this time, no, okay, old business? Senior Center regionalization, regionalization discussion. Is part one of old business, um. We have received phone calls from the town of Barry. And the town of North Brookfield. Saying that they have been contacted by a member of the council on aging, on regionalization. With uh, those two, and I, I'm assuming, Paul, there's gonna be another one coming up too, you're gonna be.
Yeah, to bring the board up to what's going on, okay, uh. The senior center basically has been running on all volunteers. And to actually operate it properly, I mean, the amount of hours that it takes. Has really been a burden on the COA members, because not only are they. You know, trying to be an overseer, but they're also actually running the center, okay, and they're running the activities and everything. And uh. The chair has, for personal reasons, had to step down. Okay, so right now the council is running without a chair. And at the last council meeting. Uh, they voted to authorize me to contact adjoining towns to see if there was. Any possibility of, of merger between Ocam and an adjoining town. And uh. Put this information together and bring it back to the council. So they could deliberate and determine which is the best route to take for them to be able to serve the seniors in Ocam. Uh. I have contacted the uh, town administrators in Barry. In Rutland, in North Brookfield. Specifically told them that I was not any member of any. Board or, or I was not a member of the council of age, and I was just soliciting information to bring forward. For the council to deliberate on, I have absolutely no authority to make any decisions or anything like that. It's strictly a move to solicit information to bring forward to the board. Uh, I will say that all three towns were very receptive to the idea. Uh, the, the question also is what would be. An assessment of, you know, financial contribution in order to make a merger. So all this information will be compiled, deliberated by the council and when they come up with. A possibility or, or multiple possibilities, they will bring them forward to the board of selectmen to review also. But right now it's basically a fact finding mission. And again, just trying to assist, you know. For the best service of the seniors in town. That's basically where it is.
We'll be awaiting proposals from the council.
From the council, yes, like I said, I mean, it's, it's. They want to deliberate on, on which is the best, I mean, if you have an avenue, possibly. A part-time director and, and keeping, you know, everything going here. Or the possibility of merging with a town if it's financially, you know, feasible. Uh, to look at the services available in each town, every town's a little bit different. Uh, there, there is a lot of material for them to go over before they come up with any kind of decision or recommendation to bring forth to your board. And that's really basically it right now in a nutshell, I know of personally.
Have you contacted um, the town of Hardwick?
Hardwick is.
They're part of the.
Hardwick is part of Barry.
Right.
And my communications with the uh, administrative person in Barry was basically to find out. Uh, financially how Hardwick was able to, you know, merge in, into Barry. Uh. Basic information is they, they receive Hardwick's. Uh, formula grant fund and I think uh, also ninety-five hundred dollars. I mean, that, that was an agreement between Hardwick and, and Barry. Uh, what would be available to us, I don't know until we get information back.
What about transportation from Hardwick to Barry for their people?
It's only five and a half miles from here, from, from this filter, okay, anybody who was able to get up here would have no problem getting to Barry. But again, also, I mean, we want to look at, at what services available in each town, you know, each town's a little different. So we'll put the whole picture together. And work from there, you know?
Now, is that, is that something you polled Paul, the, the membership? As to whether they would travel to another town?
Okay, I'm having trouble hearing, sorry.
Is that something you polled within the membership?
We aren't at that point yet.
They, they have to.
Yeah.
Debate and, and deliberate over the information to decide.
Yeah, the question is.
I'm not on the council.
No, no, I know.
No say on it.
I guess the question is if and when. You know, say they, we join Barry or whatever, are people actually going to drive to Barry or drive to North Brookfield or?
We already have a class running in Rutland. And we have, beyond that class, we have at least a half dozen or more people attending. And we have beyond that class, we have at least a half dozen or more people attending other events in Rutland.
Okay, so.
I don't know from Ocam. I don't know about how many attend events in Barry.
Okay.
We have probably a class of a dozen or more operating on Wednesdays in Rutland that we pay for right now.
Right.
I mean, one of the crazy things in consideration is also we don't know what's going to happen with the town hall. If people decide that they want this building renovated, you're going to shut down the senior center for a good period of time.
Correct.
Everybody's going to have to be out of here, okay? That's one of the things in the back of the mind of the council. So I mean, they're trying to look ahead and try to do what's best for the seniors in town.
That's probably most likely where that's going to go. You know, cost wise is the renovation at all. No decision on it yet. We haven't counted the surveys or, you know, on the committee. So that meeting is next week to tally all that to see what the consensus is.
Just as a thing, if you take like the funding from, you know, the formula grant and the cost of having a part-time director, it may be pretty close over a cost to go to another town and you don't have to worry about the personnel, okay?
No, you're right.
Services could be greater.
Yep.
I mean, there's so many things to look at really before the picture can be congealed and forwarded to the board.
And I mean, just looking at Barry's facility, that's a very nice facility that they have in Barry. Same with North Brookfield.
North Brookfield facility is quite good. Rutland's facility is quite good. I mean, there are a lot of, you know, positives, few negatives here and there, but I mean, I mean, the council's problem right here is space.
Right.
And if I can just add to the board that both the town administrator for Barry and North Brookfield did call, and they were ready to jump and speak with the board. I know for Barry, they said that the chairperson for the Barry, the board of selectmen and would be interested in having further conversation with a board member from Ocam as well as including a board member from Hardwick because they're already regionalized with them. And then today, the North Brookfield gentleman called Mike, I forgot his last name, but he was ready to come to the meeting tonight and address the board.
He's the administrator of the North.
Yeah, so I mean, he called, he contacted me and he already spoke with his board and both towns seemed to be willing to go. You know, obviously, I know that that's not where you guys might be, but just letting you know that they did say that.
Too premature at this point to do that. We just haven't heard from Rutland yet on the places that you've contacted.
Haven't heard any financial.
From anybody?
From anybody.
Okay, okay.
And again, I was very upfront telling all of these towns that I was not a member of the council and I was not on any board in town and that I was soliciting information for the council and aging. That was, I made that very clear.
Okay, then. I don't see that there's further action for us to take right now until Paul and the council on aging has the proposals in place that we can discuss. And of course, we're going to have to discuss with FinCom as well. They're probably going to be the last say of whatever happens according to where our budget is this year. So we'll have to.
The best, best thing, best possibility, okay, would be if we could get the information that's necessary and an idea, you know, before the next town meeting. So I mean, if there's something that needed to be done for a town vote, it could be handled that way. That's probably what the goal would be, I would think. We'll try to put it together with all the information necessary for us.
Good.
And you're letting this be known throughout the town to all the seniors in town to see what they think too?
Until the council has an idea. I mean, the people going to always look at different exercise activities, I mean, it's, it's a change. I mean, every time they change, you have to go to a different location and everything.
Right.
And it'd be nice to be able to eliminate that, you know?
Yeah. And we're not going to tell the town seniors at large until we have a better idea of what we want to do. There's no sense putting out all the options if they're not all feasible. Okay. Okay, that makes sense. Okay, so we'll wait till we get your proposals? Or if you've contacted from the council? If you find out any other information in your discussion?
Yeah, I'll be bringing it forward.
Yeah. That sounds good to me.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, very good. Then we'll leave it at that. We'll wait to hear from you in some of your decisions that you've made. Okay, thank you so much. And last on our list, Skyline Drive. I take it that's why the planning board is here?
Yes. Maribel and I got a response. They, they sent a letter to Mr. Nance, and that's where the drainage outlet for Skyline and Schoolhouse Drive. No. Oh, yeah. But it has all the. So even though everything is documented and everything, council would like to have Mr. Nance sign off on it. And he's in receipt of that letter. And he's forwarding it to his council, according to Sharon Everett.
How long has he lived in that property?
The purchase date is on the.
About two years? But he had no idea that there's a question about those roads when he actually purchased his property?
Which is what really doesn't make any sense is because it, it clearly shows on his, his deed that there is a drainage easement. But town council felt that in their, their title section, they were kind of hung up on the fact that that was the only one. And I explained to her, I said, hey, it's all downhill. That's why it's at the bottom of the.
Right. And it drains through the sedimentation ponds.
For best planning board clarification, lot seven, his property does not mention the easement. It's shown on the reported plan of the subdivision.
Okay, that's what.
The deed for lot eight says subject to easement. For his property, lot seven does not.
That's not.
So that's.
That's the.
That's what she's talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the easement was intended to be on that property.
Correct. And that's where the pipe actually is.
Because we did that several years ago.
So basically, she has sent him the language to accept that drain easement and what did, what did she say about him requesting legal fees? And I'm assuming that is going to be for filing and everything if.
Yeah, his email respondent to town council says, I'm in receipt of your letter regarding the easement for my property located at one sixty Skyline Drive in Ocam. See seed in this email are my attorneys. To proceed further with this request and communications, I need confirmation that my attorney fees will be covered in full regarding this matter. After that, we can try working through this. Thanks and have a great day. After he received the correspondence from council.
Does the actual drainage go underneath that row of trees that were planted there? Or are they just to the side of it?
Believe the pipe is to the side of those trees. There's some bushes right at the frontage that have to be removed if they are needed to do work.
Yeah, I mean, the easement's twenty-five feet
Yep.
in width
Yeah.
to the sediment basin or pond or which shares, what, seven lot eight, the pond, I believe.
Pipe goes down to the pond.
On seven.
And the drainage basin is on both lot seven and lot eight.
Right.
Right. Who's going to be responsible for cleaning out the sedimentation pond? The town? So that would be the highway department then would then have to send out its. Because up until now, Mr. Como has done it a few times. At least when I called him, he said he's done it. Because it does gather mosquitoes.
Well, it's active beaver problems if I can get the plots.
Beavers are everywhere. Unfortunately, 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 depends. I know it's a tricky place with that.
Well, we have to hire that out because all we have an hour of tobacco, we wouldn't have the reach to reach down on adequate clean that out.
Would have to be a track machine possible.
I mean, that, that'll be going forward. Right now it's just to have it all legal so that we can take care of it. And get it in the get it in the street listing, you know, for the mileage and you know, the chapter ninety calculations and all that stuff.
And the pipe is still draining freely? Because that would have to be cleaned out then if it's not. Okay. Any other questions on that project?
You didn't happen to figure out the exact footage to the thousands of feet, the roads?
Once that property is cleared up and the man, Mr. Nance signs the paperwork, that he agrees with everything, then is the road ready to be paved? Or accepted, I should say, accepted by the town?
As we understand it, what's supposed to happen is Como's attorney needs to submit everything to the board of selectmen. And they forward it to the planning board. We have forty-five days to get an opinion on the condition of the road and any other things that are outstanding. I think we were prepared to turn it around quickly, give it right back to you so it can be put on the, on the next town meeting.
Town meeting?
Yeah, now the, the other thing town council was talking about is just taking it by eminent domain. Roads. They felt that that would be, you know, once the easement is rectified, that would be the way they're suggesting to do it. And that would eliminate a lot of the because I believe Amadeo and Sonny have signed off on, see, basically what happened with the chapter seven, then it became nobody to sign it over to the town. Because the corporation went bankrupt. So there was no signatory. If we'd had a vote to accept the roads, there would have been nobody to sign it over.
The town council told us that Ocam Center gravel was reactivated so that they could transfer any remaining interest.
Yeah, and I believe Jack has signed whatever paperwork he needed to sign.
He has.
Yeah.
He did that six months ago, I think.
Yes.
Yeah, a while ago.
Yeah, it's been opened again.
What did he say? The timing was on the eminent domain if we were to go that route?
Could be before the first of the year. If, if, this is the only thing hanging it up right here. So the other issue, there was one other issue. There was a question about a power easement. I believe, and I don't remember who the person was because everything is underground. So those are easements on each one of those houses, each one of those lots. Because power, telephone, whatever, all goes underground to those homes. So that would be an easement to allow the utilities to dig that up and fix it. Basically. Because it runs down each side or yeah, probably each side of the right of way on the roads, those utility easements. There's green posts sticking up which are yeah, part of that utility structure. Separate of the road, you know, the road, it's just for the power. I would imagine.
So is town council working directly with the board? We, we don't have any involvement until the board.
So town council on Mr. Nance's response suggested or said, Mary, will please see the request below from Mr. Nance that the town pay his attorney fees. To the extent that you are inclined to do so, I recommend a cap. Perhaps not to exceed a certain amount, for example, say five hundred to a thousand. Please let me know how you would like for me to respond. So.
Cap on the wagon pay his lawyers for?
If that's something you guys are.
I read it as covering the filing fees to report on.
Okay.
That's the way I read it, but I think we need to clarify that with her.
Yeah.
We do.
Once she gets a response from Nance's attorney.
My opinion is zero.
Well, I don't think that there's going to be a response until, until there's a confirmation of if the board is willing to
Right.
pay. Now, what, like Mike said, what, pay what? Is it just like filing fees and those, the basic coverage or is it? I don't know. But she suggested a cap if, if that was the case.
At a minimum, there's going to be a filing. You know, to record this.
Yeah.
Okay. And then it sounds like he wants whatever the fee is possibly for his attorney to do his end of it.
That's what it sounds like.
Problem with the fee, the filing fees.
Yeah.
My problem is we're not paying his lawyer.
His, yeah.
No, I hear you, but we, I'm not. Maribel and I aren't sure from what that, what he's.
What that specifies.
He just threw out that phrase, so we've got to pin down what that phrase means in his mind.
Well, in my opinion, the cap is zero.
Yeah.
He's saying he wasn't aware of the, that was on his property, right?
Evidently not.
I don't know that he's saying he wasn't aware of it. But.
Weren't they saying that it was not on his deed, the copy of the deed that he received? It is not on that copy.
So whether his title company, when he bought that house from Gudrow,
Exactly.
Didn't do.
Exactly.
Their due diligence on the title search. But town council, you know, told us that they didn't feel comfortable just doing it the way it sits right now. So there, there's something about it that didn't get done right way, way back. Is what I'm getting from it. And whether it was when it changed hands between Gudrow and Nance, I think that's where the problem is.
The original deed from Ocam Center gravel to Gudrow and the deed from Gudrow to Nance, neither one of those deeds mentioned the easement.
That must be what he's talking.
Only on the plan.
But it's on the plan. And it's in the verbiage in here in the description. But so that's got to be what you know, Sharon is talking about.
Still get clarification as to what coverage?
I guess we have Sharon find out what their, what their definition of fees are. Because if we, if we take record the easement, we've got to record it in the town's title, in the town's name. So that's a cost to us anyways at some point. You know, to take ownership of the, the right of way.
That's fine. It's ours.
Yeah, yeah.
I feel bad for the new owner because he had no idea when he was filing and he, he did the proper steps, have it reviewed and like that, but nobody came up with this particular item.
Title company has insurance and.
Exactly. Exactly. I mean, you know, after only living there for maybe two years.
Yeah.
And then to find that out.
Reason he didn't want to pay that. Well, that was talking probably, town would have to take that.
Yes. There is that possibility, sure.
That might be the if there's any disagreement on that, we just take it. He can't have this go drag on for another two years.
No. No, and-
No, we can't. We've been on this one for quite a while.
Council pointed that out that, hey, you know, if the, if the town had the option just to walk away from all of it, you're still going to own it. So from that standpoint, you know, the town could just, you know.
Maybe that should be the approach, take the whole thing by eminent domain, including easement.
Well, that's what, that's what council's recommendation was.
Including easement, right?
If it got to that, they would rather not do that.
Right.
Because it could get litigated.
Of course.
You know, which is an expense that is really something you shouldn't have to do. But at the end of the day, it's, it's all on the ground. It's all going that way and it's not, it's just physics at this point.
Problem is someday, someday.
Well, someday it'll plug up and, um, so that's kind of where it stands as of tonight.
All set on that question?
I'm on that one.
We'll wait to see what happens then on that one also for now. Anything else for discussion?
I was going to read that. Oh, that's okay. Uh, on the twenty-fifth, Lauren, the director for the library, sent an email to the Board of Selectmen saying, good afternoon and all. I'm trying to plan ahead for winter weather, which will be here before you know it. I know that last winter, the library had a private snow removal company take care of our parking lot, but I was hoping that the highway department could add us to the town roster this year. Is this something that we could discuss? I think there was some concerns about which direction the snow could be pushed with the new playground, but I'm sure that together we can come up with a plan that would work for all. Please let me know if this is something that the Board of Selectmen and Highway Department would be open to. And if there are any questions for me, reach out. Lauren.
I thought it wasn't just a question of which way to push the snow. Was really rather have a front loader come in and remove the snow in that direction because it's such a small area for the, any of the vehicles to move around in. Unfortunately, she wasn't director of the library when we went through this with the people and, and with the trustees.
Yeah, the way they got that set up, we can't go in and just push it across. We have to go down with the loader and be-
Well, you'd need to-
Bucket.
Take it out.
Yeah.
Pickups, we'd just be pushing it in the corner and the handbags and everything else that's there.
She had asked if it could just be pushed, but it still, it wouldn't make sense space-wise down the ball field.
Can't do that if we're putting a guard rail in, right? I can't. Yeah, I can't push the snow over the guard rails there.
The loader, you can put it over.
But the loader would be better.
Yeah, but-
You can do that with a loader right now. Just pick it up and-
We have to be at the end of the storm.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's such a small area for that, that large machinery in there.
And I think that when the board did the-
It could damage something else at the same time.
Yeah, when you guys did the site visit, it was the, the talk that, you know, they would have to be at the end of their plowing the route, go back up to the highway department, get a different piece of equipment, come back.
Oh, yeah.
Those were all the things that was discussed at that site visit.
Kevin?
This was an issue that was brought to their attention when they, before they even started that playground. But this was going to be an issue of plowing the snow. That library is on a route with one of the small trucks. When they're doing the town hall, the, the school and the library at the same time. Now you, these guys get done with snowstorm, they want to go home. They don't want to have to be bouncing all over the place because of a situation that shouldn't even happen at their library. So now you got to take the loader, run down there and, and clean the, the library parking lot every time. Where you should be able to just do it with the small truck like it's been done for the years. And this was an issue that was, was brought to their attention and they said, fine, we'll plow it. And that's what we said, fine, you plow it. That's what they've been doing.
And they did it this past winter.
Never put that where they did it. That they took, you know, they took the handicap though and I don't think they even resolved the handicap parking spot yet. That's my opinion.
Do they plow it now?
They did this past winter.
They did.
Private contracted it, yeah. I don't know who did it, but someone did it, yeah.
My opinion, that's all.
So Lauren, of course, being new, you know, she, she just kind of wants to circle back and, you know, can't fault us for that.
No.
That, that is, it came from the board of directors at the time to try and we'll plow it.
I believe that was one of the trustees that said that at that meeting.
Urged them not to do that, what they did, but they weren't, they're, they're property and they can do what they want to do and that's what we got.
We'll have to think about it.
It'd have to be a much smaller truck vehicle. It would-
If it was big enough to throw it.
Yeah, that, and you'd have to be done several times if it's a heavy snow.
Six or eight months. Nobody's got nothing. Motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seven eighteen. Don't you want to end?